Welcome to another episode of Key Biscayne Stories where neighbors meet neighbors. Today, we have council member Frank Kaplan. He has been, he's been, he's been living in the Key for 40 years and has been serving in the village council for 12.
12 years?
He's currently running for reelection. So we are, I'm sure a lot of people know Frank, but we're gonna go and get to know him a little bit more here for us. Thank you for jumping on the show. How are you doing today?
I'm doing wonderfully. It's not raining. It's good to be with you and things.
So we have a set of questions we've been asking all the candidates and we're just gonna run through them. So we'll, we'll dive right in. We have a couple of icebreaker questions.
What's the best piece of advice you've ever been given?
It depends on my age. When I was a kid, I think the best advice that I received was to be a kid, have fun, but be disciplined enough to be able to stay on the path of some ability to achieve my better self, you know? Also pay attention to important positive role models in our family and among our, in our community, which turned out to be very good advice later because as an adolescent, I think when I was in high school, those connections and my appreciation for role models made a, made a positive difference for me. Taking this path instead of that path, which was a better decision for me and that helped me. So, so one byproduct of all of that advice was to be able to be, have a sense of responsibility, to be able to be dependable to others and to do what was right for me. So that was all good advice, I think.
Can you tell us something about yourself that most people don't know?
I do get angry sometimes.
Oh, who doesn't?
Um, I cook every day. I'm, I'm the chef after working full time and coming home and dealing with the vicissitudes of the day in the village of Key Biscayne affairs. Still manage to find the chef's apron and make the meals and I've enjoyed that. That's a good thing for me.
So now we have to ask, what is your, what are your top meals?
I'd learned to rely on, at my daughter's advice, Blue Apron, three days a week.
Okay.
And they just send a box of food with recipes and it's pretty easy. You still have to prepare the food, but it's, all the thinking is done. The other four days a week, I improvise and I try to mix it up and I'm actually looking through cookbooks and taking advice and I try to do new and novel things, some of which are thudding failures and others of which elicit polite acclaim and some of which are very good. So it's an experiment, but we're, we're working on it.
I'm getting this, that this image of a potential future show of cooking with, with council member Frank Kaplan.
Let's do it.
And we could discuss a particular issue.
I'll be talking about herbs and spices. It'd be thrilling.
I like that.
Knife skills, very important, especially cleaning up and loading the dishwasher properly. Years of experience from a disapproving mother-in-law on how to load the dishwasher, health.
Cooking and cleaning as you go is key.
Yep, yep.
What's the most important thing in your life today?
Oh, the most important thing in my life is probably life itself. We're probably at our, in our, at the age that we've gotten to and, and the stage of life we're in, probably in a pre-transitional mode. And I think, you know, holding on to health is really, really important to me and I'm sure that others in our family feel the same way because, you know, we're old, we're older. So health and wellness and just keep going. You know, work, work continues to be very stimulating and satisfying and I take a lot of pride in that. In some respects, it's easier, you know, experienced and I can do things without the same degree of prep stress and the like. So work is really good. Things out here in the village are endlessly interesting and satisfying for me. So I feel like I'm kind of riding the wave, but I also, you know, I don't know when, but there will be an end and it'll change. So I'm pretty much appreciating every day.
So tell us a little bit about your background story. How did you end up in the Key?
My path was after law school, I became an appellate clerk in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I wanted to stay in Western Massachusetts like life interests. It's always a backstory. There was a reason I wanted to stay in Western Massachusetts. The job market at the time was abysmal, but I got a job in a good law firm in Springfield, Mass. I didn't like the work much, but I wanted to learn the, the skills. A friend of mine from that era recently passed away and I was eulogizing him at his celebration of life and remembering how we were unwilling to be mediocre and we helped each other self-educate. We didn't have good mentors and we were sort of thrown into the deep end, kicking furiously not to screw up, but we helped each other learn what we needed to learn. He moved into his own law firm, asked me to join. I wanted to do other things. I joined a big British bank affiliate of a British bank, Barclays Bank, went around the country doing deals, mostly hospitality, marinas, golf courses, leisure oriented stuff. I got recruited ultimately by a law firm that I knew in Philadelphia and esteemed that was in Miami, that had rejected me twice and then got to know me in the actual doing of the thing and made me an offer. I had been in California most of the time, but I didn't want to be on the West Coast because my family, which as we discussed a moment ago, is very important to me, is on the East Coast. Miami's on the East Coast and it's in the same time zone as everyone else. And although I didn't know anything about Miami, here I came. I knew Key Biscayne because we'd come here in the 60s and I remember Brandon Park and this unique experience on that shallow beach with no waves and warm water. I came out here one morning to see what the real estate deal was like and where I might be able to set up my shop and live. I remember waiting for the appointment with a realtor that I'd had never met before and I went to the Donut Gallery. And there at about eight 30 in the morning, I found this vibrant, loving, embracing community early-ish in the day, in each other's lives in a very positive way. And that moment of community at the Donut Gallery made me think, this is all I need to know. I've seen enough. And that's the story. So I came here, I moved to Botanica. Almost no one was living in Botanica at the time and we made, you know, we made a life. I started to go to the pre-incorporation Key Biscayne Council meetings and I got involved in, in trying to be a helpful volunteer. This is around the late 80s. I remember Helen White was my initial contact to put me to work. That was in zoning and planning originally. And one thing led to another and I just continued to volunteer, volunteer, volunteer. It just kept going, never stopped.
Well, did you serve in the first council?
No, no, no. My, my original contribution, if that's the right word, I got summoned down to Gene Sterns' office at some point after working with Helen and Betty Sim Conroy and others that were in leadership, Ray Sullivan, Cliff Brody at the time, went down to Gene's office and we talked about master planning. It's essentially growth management. And this was pre-incorporation and the charge to me was figure out what the state law says, what it requires, what our opportunities are to create the kind of community that we want to create. Like, why are we doing this incorporation movement in the first place? And what tools can we bring to bear if we are successful in this effort to basically build the kind of community that we're, we're fighting for? So we put a committee together, probably he was late 1990, maybe early 1991, months, months before the vote for incorporation certainly did a lot of work, both in zoning and especially in comp planning, master planning. In addition to trying to figure out what the law required, which wasn't that difficult, we also went to some pains to describe Key Biscayne, the characteristics, the qualities, what it was about this place that made a healthy community way before incorporation. In other words, incorporation didn't create the community. The community basically pre-existed and created the incorporation movement, right? So we, we were very studious, referring, for example, to the census changes from 1980 to 1990, you know, who was moving here? What was the population characteristics? What apropos of today? What infrastructure we had and what kind of shape it was in, including stormwater? So all of these things got baked into a work product. Right after incorporation, I remember going to the first council and presenting that work product. It was important work and well-done and that council directed our work to continue post-incorporation, which we did. We, we formed a new committee and kept working on the same projects, intersecting ultimately a few years later with the first planning consultant that was hired to actually do the comp plan for the new village of Key Biscayne. I remember that work was kind of halting. There was a loss of momentum in my opinion and my memory and we were concerned about that. So we just kept trying to breathe life into active and effective public participation to keep the energy going and keep the quality of the work product very high. And I think, I dare say, we were successful at that. Good things came of it and things just moved on. So the new village of Incorporated, uh, Key Biscayne is now up and running post-incorporation and I got plugged into other jobs subsequently. Most of the time, I wound up chairing those committees. I found that I thought I was a good, good facilitator as chair and it came to me not too many years later that I thought I might be a good mayor. So I ran for mayor as my first gambit in electoral office and I was successful in attaining that office and was reelected in that office, fulfilled my two terms. The term limit came about and I thought I had a continuing path and I ran for council and I was elected and I've just continued since then. In 2018, I was term limited and I left. I had two years away and I came back again. I was more or less recruited to do so at that time. I was relatively happy in retirement, but I came back. I think I contributed again and it's been a good four years. It's ending now and it occurred to me, is this the right time for me to leave and drive off into the sunset? And ultimately the answer that occurred to me was no, it's not. There's a lot of work to be done. I've been doing it for a long time. I have a lot of knowledge that I can bring and help those debates that are still going to be unfolding be as high level as they can be. So I thought I'd better try again.
You mentioned that you ran for mayor. Can you tell us more about that experience?
I especially loved that service. I got to a point, I'd been chairing different committees and dealing with a whole variety of hot topic subjects at the time, including lots of people who cared very passionately and from different points of view about whatever it was that it was at issue. I felt like I was good at moderating factions and disparate viewpoints, creating consensus where we could and certainly creating a sense of cohesion among people that were participating, even if they disagreed, even if they passionately disagreed. So we were, I felt successful in these various ventures at creating really good process. And I also felt that good results were coming out of those processes. So when it came time for me to see where could I be most useful, I developed this ambition and a sense that I could fulfill the ambition effectively as mayor specifically. So I sought that seat, not my first foray as a member of the council, but specifically that seat. What came of it, I think, kind of validated the, my psychology in thinking that I could do this because I think we had two excellent terms when I was mayor. I'm very proud of the kind of process and cohesion that I was just describing a moment ago that I think we successfully engendered. One of the things about that that I always think about now on, as by, in my service, is the ability to talk to each other, not in three-minute snippets of preordained talking points, but rather a real conversation. So, so we can kind of iterate and work off of each other's ideas and get to a place where you can get to and I can get to and maybe get to the best possible result because we're working together. It takes a little bit of courage and a little bit of nimbleness on the dais in real time to do that, but with the right facilitation and the kind of confidence that comes from practicing that, that I think is what happened during my mayoral term. And I really feel good about that. I learned something about how to perpetuate that, I think, and I try to bring that now as a member of our council. The results, I think, also validated, you know, the idea that I might be able to be a good mayor because we accomplished a lot, I think. And I, I think some of what we were able to do might be considered somewhere in the neighborhood of positively transformative. I think the Mast Academy initiative is a good example. The ability to get the school district to agree to partner with us took, I think, a measure of personal diplomacy that required a lot of me, but I think I felt very good about the process and the result and, and was motivated to put all of my effort into, into achieving that and it happened. And the ability to think about, you know, curriculum, which is not particularly our prerogative, but the development of the Cambridge Academy curricular choices as an adjunct to the maritime program, I was really proud of and I thought it was just great thinking. I hope that the result of all these years later is positive. I think it is from my visits to Mast, but I hope that's correct. The idea of doing the Mast field was out of nowhere, but we needed it and we persuaded the district, yeah, let's do it because you could use it too. That was good. The K8 renovations were a byproduct of all this work. They were absolutely critical in my imagination because the, the condition of the, of the community school was really deplorable at the time and we couldn't get the school district sort of working through regular channels to agree to replace toilets. It had just gotten to a point of, of failure, really. And so the methodology was basically, we're dealing with a failure of public education. Are we going to fix it or are we going to just ignore it and let it melt into something unsustainable? And the decision was we're going to fix it. I think the, another example is the something of a Hail Mary at Oceana when the Sinesta project, the Sinesta Hotel was, was, was demolished and the project, replacement project, redevelopment project was first submitted for permitting. No one liked that project. It wasn't a good project. We, we were able, again, personal diplomacy. We were able to get, put a timeout and do a complete reset, working with the developer who had no obligation, who was willing to basically, without waiving any rights, start all over. And I think what came out of that is magnitude's better than what would have been. Holiday colonies issues were dangerously burdened. Their interests were really adversely affected, in my opinion. There were lots of complaints and, and lawsuit, if I, if I remember correctly. We were able to clean all that up and satisfy the proximity between the new development and holiday colony, which resulted in those townhouses that are the same proportionality as the neighboring street, which is Atlantic Road. That was, that was really good. That was really good. I think also what I really invested in, which I felt had not been really attended to with any kind of energy previously, was intergovernmental relations. We really got active on the League of Cities Board. I joined the Regional Planning Council to put my own sweat equity into creating relationships that I thought could help us at home. I got appointed to serve on the statewide umbrella agency and I, I continue to do both of those things even this day because I think they yield fruit for us. It's better to have rapport and relationships with people that might be able to help, not to mention the simple exchange of ideas and best practices we bring home and that helps us be smarter. So those things I'm, I'm really proud of. I think when the Bear Cut Bridge went down, I'm, I'm serene about the way we handled that emergency. I think we made the best decision.
You mean the listing call?
No, the Bear Cut Bridge at one point, and I think it was 2011, was impassable on one lane and was, was, that lane was shut down because there was some structural problems. So the question was how to get the bridge back up in a hurry safely and what's the long-term plan or medium-term plan for replacing the bridge? And, and not to forget, the West Bridge right at the toll booth and also the Powell Bridge, considering their state of use, remaining useful life and condition.
A lot of people miss that toll by the, by the bridge. They don't realize it's three bridges, not two.
There are three bridges. There are three bridges. That, that also was kind of coincident with a lot of conflict between bikes and cars at the time. We, and I personally, and we collectively really engaged in trying to reduce those conflict points and create more harmony on the part of the causeway that's actually a recreational amenity as opposed to a road. They are the same thing, but, you know, making those two different functions coexist better was something we put some effort into. And I think, I think for the sake of some improvement. So those, those were, that's my experience more or less as mayor. The best thing with all the tangible accomplishments that I've just rattled off, I think, was that process of being able to work most effectively as a body. I, I felt really good about that and I still do.
I like your, your focus on process and that when you sit in council and I'm listening to the meetings, you always talk about the importance of process because at the end of the day, without a good process, can't get anything done at the end of the day.
You know, I think the two years that I was out of service after my term limit, we saw an example of what happens when that degrades and that's one of the reasons I ran in 2020. I thought I could, I thought I could come back and help with that. It's probably for others to determine how well I've done at that, but I personally feel good about that contribution. And I think my colleagues on the dais presently probably agree because they encouraged me very strongly to run again. So that's validating.
And what do you think the most important issues that the Keys face in today?
It's funny how issues come up. They pop up out of nowhere. So they're inevitably, they're going to be temporal problems that arise that might not be on my mind today, but will be a preoccupation tomorrow. That happens. Three things, right? They're kind of conceptual, but the first that I would mention is our extrajurisdictional dependence and need to rely on intergovernmental relationships that we have very limited control over, some degree of influence over if we're good. And if that personal diplomacy is, is, is brought to bear in an engaging and constructive way, we can, we can be influential. But ultimately, for various reasons, we are a bit vulnerable and dependent on other agencies, other governments to basically do the right thing and support our local interests. So what that requires, it seems to me, and the challenge is to never stop engaging with our governmental partners. I, I mentioned a bit ago, I committed a fair amount of my personal time and energy to the Regional Planning Council and the Florida Regional Council Association to try to be able to have leverage to be more influential in this regard because I think it is so important. A couple of, a couple of illustrative examples of why this comes up potentially all the time and in either positive or threatening way. One example is the causeway. The utilization of Virginia Key by the city of Miami as essentially a land bank to generate special event revenues to the detriment of the village of Key Biscayne and our traffic is, is a problem. It's not easy to work with the city of Miami and so patience and persistence are, it seems to me, really required and, and relationship building to the best of our ability. Another example is, is the issue with preemption at the state. We've been, I think, fairly afflicted in terms of home rule, so to speak, for, for a local government and the ability to utilize our best judgment for public health and safety and welfare on lots of different issues, some of which are petty relative to others, leaf blowers and, and tree trimming as opposed to e-bikes and texting while driving, just to name a few examples. And then, you know, we've talked lately about the Live Local Act and, and to whatever extent that is not simply a theoretical threat, what does, what does a city do like ours to protect itself against that which it simply cannot endure, which is a massive dump of density under the rubric of affordable housing? Not to say that that's not a statewide problem, it is, but that solution that was rendered at the legislature, brought home here, is a disaster. Lastly, it occurs to me, funding sources, you know, relying on other people's money to do the things that we know we need to do here. We're doing very well at that now, but that just has to continue. Second point dovetails into that last one. The second problem is this whole resilience and adaptation survivability plan, I'll call it, instead of the Big Dig. The, the controversy associated with this is foreseeable, the complexity and cost and inability to accurately reliably with perfect clairvoyance anticipate that every decision we're making will be successful and effective as intended in the near term, the medium term and the long term, especially given climatological conditions that are estimated but not known until they're known. So this is, this is a tough problem and I think one of the things that causes us to need to focus on doing better is communicating better. In terms of what I hope to accomplish in the next term, if I'm elected, I am really focused on that, communicating better. We communicate a lot. We employ graphic presentations that are superior to anything I've ever seen before, but I don't think we're communicating effectively, adequately, frequently. The last thing is something I've been thinking about more or less since pre-incorporation, which is the demographic changes in the island. The aging out of the old timers and the, the frequency and, and, you know, sort of organic population growth and people coming into the island from other places has really changed the demographic mix. One of the consequences, I think, is that the built-in knowledge and history and sort of mutually shared sense of what's qualitative and precious about Key Biscayne is not so reliably and automatically shared pervasively as it used to be. So the ability to draw on that cohesive community is potentially reduced as a result. And I think, you just can't, you can't let that happen. It's too fundamental to what is the nature and definition and defining quality of this community. And it's also too fundamental to our effective processes that we were talking about a bit ago. An obvious point of this is our population has grown so much and traffic is, is unrecognizably different than it was a generation ago and it's bad and it's hard to solve. So, and then, you know, you look at what's going on around the country and, and factionalism develops to a point where people can't even comprehend each other and don't want to. They don't think it's important to potentially because they're living in different cultural bubbles. Can't let that happen here. So those are the three things that I think are, you know, come to mind automatically as far as challenges.
Can you share with us some things that you believe the Key is doing well?
Yeah, I can. I think we're fulfilling the best promise of incorporation quite well. If you look back to the aspirations of beautification, excellent governmental services, all of the ambitions in 1991, I think we're doing great. I really do. It's always a good idea to not be self-deluded about the about the ultimate attainment of unimprovable excellence. However, we should be preoccupied with not just the things that we think are going well, but what could be improved and what's working well enough to just let it work and being wise enough to know the difference. But if you look at, for example, Prandon Boulevard and the sidewalk and road and wood that's in the beautification and tree scape throughout the island, all over the west side, the tree canopy, in some places this is better than others. And I'd liken also the next four years to be more uniform in beautification and a lovely tree canopy. But when I look at photographs from the early nineties and ride my bike or jog along the, in the west side, they don't look the same. And it's not just because the housing stock is different. The streetscape is more beautiful. What else are we doing well? I think our public safety services, our police and fire couldn't. Maybe they could possibly be better, but they're really good. Um, I think our budgetary process and also the presentation of the budget has gotten much better from where we were in 2010. We, uh, in 2010, when I was working with Chip Iglesias, who was the manager at the time, several members of our council along with me thought that the budget was simply not intuitive. And so for newcomers on council and for the community who were paying attention to budgeting, it was very difficult to follow the, the presentation every year that led to the hearings that lead to the adoption of the budget. So we basically scrapped the written work, not the building process itself, but the written work. And we developed a different template that would be more intuitive, uh, that would enable people to understand fixed cost allocations and all kinds of things better than had existed previously. In terms of building the budget, we discussed this just recently because we just adopted the budget. The, it's all rooted in strategic planning and careful analysis that replicates over the course of the year. So the ability to divine what kind of things we want to really focus on and accomplish in the given, in the coming year and things that can be deferred in ensuing years, but begun or at least place held for later years, enables us to keep track of strategic planning in a pretty effective way, I think. And then the so-called baseline, the, the simple provision of governmental services, I think is very, is excellently done. Um, there's a lot of advancement in, in cost savings through procurement and competitive bidding. That's all good. Leveraging other revenue sources other than ad verum is improved. I think money management and, uh, investment yield on our reserves is really good. Uh, there's criticism about the fact that there are reserves. I don't see a basis for criticism, actually. There's some approximation in the baseline budget and there's typically, and this is better news than the opposite, uh, some money left over at the end because, you know, whenever expenses were less than projected or revenues were greater than projected, savings were able to be realized that weren't anticipated because of careful management. These are all good things. So I feel, I feel good about all that. And maybe most fundamentally, despite what I just said about the demographic change and some degree of fretfulness about, you know, losing that knowledge base, that sort of cultural connection with our history because of the displacement of old timers with newcomers, especially newcomers that may not, in their lives, from wherever they came from, be so community embracing as we always have been, worry about that. But still and again, today in 2024, we still have that core community that is together, is intact, does participate, is engaged, is knowledgeable, supports, I think generally speaking, what we're trying to do in terms of advancing our cause, you know, the best for the community, that stills here. I want to keep it here.
So what, what of the, I guess, nature or natural parts of being in council is receiving all sorts of opinions and thoughts? How, how do you plan to work with those that oppose your ideas?
I have a certain way, for sure. And it may not be the same as everybody else, but my way is my way. To begin with, I think it is my responsibility at, at the core level of responsibility to be as accessible to a person who thinks I'm doing a terrible job and disagrees with everything I say and think as, you know, the fan club, so to speak. So I, I think it's essential to engage with the opposition. That includes me being open-minded. So if I have an opinion that's rooted in study and knowledge and experience, I think that I have a heightened ability to explain why I think I think the way I do to that person. But I have to be, um, amenable to hearing that person's point of view too. And then I have to be discerning enough to determine whether I've learned anything that I didn't know before, or whether I've been presented with something that I didn't consider adequately before. And if the answer is yes, I think that it's my job, it's incumbent upon me to moderate or adjust my thinking because I've learned something. If that doesn't happen and I'm left with where I started after this patient engagement in good faith, with an open mind and an open heart and all of that, then I have to have the conviction to say why I think they're wrong. And, you know, respectfully and civilly, but at the end of the process, our job is to make decisions. It's to make the best decisions on the best basis, the most empirical basis and predicates that are factual and truthful and, you know, rooted in whatever, you know, we draw knowledge from. Make those decisions, know what to do and then do it effectively. But that includes explaining to others why that's the right outcome. Inevitably, at the end of that process, uh, we see this. There are people that don't want to hear. They, they're in their own mindset and they're not susceptible to my best argumentation. I still have to make a decision. We still have to lean, we still have to do. But, uh, my personal view is we never do that without engaging with that, with that person. Sometimes I do learn something and I take it into consideration. Examples, there, there are many examples of where, um, where you start isn't where you end up. And I'll just, I remember it occurred to me the other day how interesting and difficult it was to deal with kite surfing, you know, that during whatever era that was and the, the conflict collision between care for concern and security and people just simply lying on the beach worrying about being garroted by, you know, parachute lines, traveling at high speed and heavy winds. Um, we listened to both sides. I personally certainly did. We navigate it, of course, and I think it was a constructive and win-win outcome.
How do you approach the opposition?
So these are those moments that we were just talking about where we're actually sitting together in stark disagreement, right? I think personally, it, it, I hope it helps with the other person that I'm speaking with to know, which is true, that I'm not particularly political. And I have not, um, issue-oriented ideological, really. I, I think that helps with both credibility and the ability to create a good reception and a, and a better conversation. My cues are really community and that probably includes cultural and intellectual and also moral. Those are my cues. And if I bring my authentic self to that conversation, I find that we're not just arguing about polemics, we're making a connection. And at the end of that conversation, I, I'm either going to learn something, as I said, and adjust my thinking, or hopefully the other person is. And then if that doesn't happen, I, um, feel like I have the ability to be somewhat persuasive. I've had success in convincing people that, uh, that there's a, there's another way to look at, at a problem. And, and we get to a better place, if not perfect agreement, at least a better place at the end. It's, it's, I never come into a situation where, um, it, you know, you're, it's broken and only I can fix it, number one. That's not my worldview. I'm not the kind of guy who says I stand for fiscal conservatism, like who doesn't? So these conversations, the, the ideological part is, is potentially defeated if you, if you come into the conversation by, by leading with an ideological proclivity as opposed to just a receptive open mind.
If you're elected or re-elected, eh, by the time you finish your term, what would you like to be remembered for?
Not exhausted.
If you survived.
I think that, um, this, it's been interesting. You never know what path in life is, uh, is going to open up. But this has been the service in Key Biscayne and my embrace and of this community and the community's embrace of me has been a really important theme in like most of my adult life. At the end of this term, if I'm re-elected, um, I will hope that I, I will feel that I have served honorably, that I've brought good character to this service. I hope others will think so too, but that's up to others always, right? I think that I will be able to feel very satisfied about positive accomplishments that, that I was able to introduce. And, and maybe in some cases feel maybe singularly responsible for either creating or creating opportunities to achieve. And I think it would be right, as I see it, for me to think and for others hopefully to think that I was able to bring out the best in other people and, and sort of channel the best of our community in doing this work and leaving a legacy of good government, that would be really nice.
So now to lighter set of questions. Um, we, uh, I like to think that the whole show is kind of light, but, and I say that to every show, but anyways. After a long stressful day, what do you do to relax?
Oh, I don't know, stress? It doesn't exist. What do I do to relax? First of all, I try and have tried throughout the entirety of my professional life to shed stress during the midst of stressful moments. Like my psychology is to try to just kind of breathe through the day and reduce stress. I, I think I'm really good at that. When I come home, the one, first of all, I, my workday doesn't really end. And I can't relax until the last email is answered because I'm hardwired to not leave things. So I, I tend to do a little of that cleanup work and hopefully it doesn't take a long time. I almost always either get a swim in or if, if my energy is good, I'll take a run at the end of the day, uh, or I'll sit up on my bike and take a bike ride. I've got one of those bikes that can take you to Croatia or Liechtenstein. So this is my vicarious travel opportunity as well. Uh, and then I make dinner. Um, I, I read every day for my own pleasure or for my own enrichment. I always read. I, and I try to keep up with the music, you know, so try to have balance in life, basically.
And what's your go-to meal if you have like a last minute guest for dinner?
Today is actually a good example of the answer. We have a, a friend visiting that used to live on the key. Uh, she lives in Dallas now. Paige Sonnenbaum is visiting us and talking about dinner. And I had all these ambitions, what I was going to make tonight. And she said, "Sir pizza." But that's not typically my go-to answer. Um, easiest thing for me to do is grill something because it's easy. But if it's something else, you know, I'll make a fish dish. I got a couple of go-to recipes or I'll make pasta, whatever, whatever I'm in the mood to do.
What do you love most about the key?
You know, it's not the weather. I moved to Florida ambivalent about Florida weather. I came here for different reasons. I love Key Biscayne's community. I've always liked islands and the kind of psychology of being separate. It's been a thing with me. Islands are important to me when I was a kid. I'd spent a lot of time on an island in Maine and later in life on an island in New York. It's, it's a thing in my worldview that I treasure, that kind of isolation, but proximity to the greater world. And, and the insularity, but also sophistication and talent of islanders. In my experience, like the self-selection of people that come to places like this result in having an opportunity to know truly wonderful people. There's just something about making the life choice to be relatively inconvenient on an island. I just love that. So this might sound a little fictional, but I actually think that exists here for me and it always has. So the community is what, um, is what drives me in Key Biscayne. Uh, I use the parks all the time. I'm always running through the neighborhoods. It's, it just is on. So I, I, that's it for me. I don't feel that way about Greater Miami necessarily. Um, if it wasn't for Key Biscayne, I'm not sure I'd be here for 40 years. You know, other options come up from time to time and I keep saying no because I'm, my flag is planted here and here I stay.
And what's your perfect weekend for you in the key?
Ah, perfect weekend is the one that unfortunately rarely happens. But historically, it's the same thing as now. I, I still work on the weekends. I tend to prepare for whatever's coming up on the next week, on the weekends. But basically, I'm on my time, my schedule and working around a couple of things. One is I get a lot of exercise on the weekends. I always have and I still do. Whether it's running or biking or swimming or all three, I do that in the weekends. Kind of like I'm a furious triathlete. I, I really try to squeeze that in intensely. And the second thing that I always do on Sunday is read the paper. And I want as much time as I want to do that. And I tend not to answer the phone and I don't do emails and I don't do any of that. I just try to relax and read the paper. And I do check in with family a lot on weekends. I call people and we reconnect. And I like to make dinner and, and just have peace in the evenings. That's about it. Pretty simple lifestyle.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for jumping on the show and sharing your story. I always like to thank the people who are running and of course you, since you've been serving already for, for 12 years, for all the time that you've taken to, to serve. You know, the time that people, I'm sure there's a lot of time that people can't see, like all the time that you study on your own, prepare for council meeting, a little time away from your family. So thank you for your service.
It's a labor of love, as I have said many times, and I hope to keep going. Thank you for spending your Sunday with me.